I call the June 15, 2021 Regular Medium Council to order. Councilperson Kirchner will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
The minutes of the June 1, 2021 work session have been approved. Council, you have received the minutes of the June 1, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
The minutes of the June 1, 2021 work session have been approved. Council, you have received the minutes of the June 1, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
The minutes of the June 1, 2021 work session have been approved. Council, you have received the minutes of the June 1, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
The minutes of the June 1, 2021 regular meeting have been approved. Public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law, ordinance number 21-0-034.
An ordinance approving and adopting the tax budget of the city of Mentor, Ohio for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2022, and submitting same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak, would you or a member of your administration please provide a description of what is being proposed in this ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council attached is, for your consideration, the proposed tax budget for the city of Mentor for next year, 2022. Under Ohio law, a municipality prepares this tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year, holds a public hearing, and adopts the budget by July 15. The tax budget is then submitted to the county budget commission, and the purpose of the tax budget is to provide a statement that demonstrates the spending is needed, the spending needs justify the property tax revenue that's incorporated into the tax budget. County Budget Commission will set the tax rates for the ensuing fiscal year based on this budget. The tax budget is not the city's operating budget. Later in the year, we'll begin to develop that operating budget and present that to council for passage. I would recommend approval as is. Thank you.
As Mr. Malinowski clarified, it's a formality that we must do a formal public hearing that we are now in. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Hearing none. Council is in receipt of all correspondence and emails received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-34.
An ordinance approving and adopting the tax budget of the city of Mentor, Ohio for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2022, and submitting same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the tax budget, as just spoke of at the public hearing, is for your consideration. Mr. Malinowski?
No further comments. It's almost identical to the previous year.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-034 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-035.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, this ordinance revises two appropriations, both for grant funds, the first being a $60,100 increase in the local coronavirus fund under the Parks and Recreation Program. It's the second opportunity award of the CRF Funding and Senior Center Relief Fund. This money is used for a variety of supplies and small tools. We have through September of this year to spend this money. The second item is just simply an increase in appropriations for a PO that was canceled at the end of the year, so we're re-appropriating that money for the HUD program. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-035 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-036.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Blue Technologies, DBA Conica Minolta Business Solutions, Inc., for the lease of 15 multifunctional printers under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and council is aware that several years ago, we were able to save a significant amount of money by consolidating all our printer functions, copying, scanning functions into larger units that we lease on a long-term basis. Mr. San?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak, council president and member of councils. Multifunction printers are heavy-duty cycle machines that help departments with their day-to-day operations. We've been using those machines over almost eight years, and they reached their end of life. Since manufacturers stopped making parts, so it's not cost-effective to keep those machines in any service anymore. Blue Technologies is offering a state-term promotion, which significantly discounted over the state of Ohio pricing. I recommend renewing the contract with Blue Tech for 60 months municipal lease to prevent productivity loss and cost repairs. If you have any question, let me know, please.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-036 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-037.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve the fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Budget, submit the fiscal year 2021 CDBG action plan, and enter into sub-recipient agreements to undertake the action plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, this represents our fiscal year 2021, federal fiscal year 2021 block grant award. It's about 2.5% lower than it was last year, not significant. The total award amount is $156,306. In Exhibit A, you will see our program that we are asking council to approve this evening. It essentially is quite similar to most years of the past. Probably the only significant change to this is an allocation of $23,194 for handicap-accessible elevator at Wildwood. That would actually be located in the new section. It's the start of what will be a long-term renovation, I should say, finishing of that space. The council is aware, up at the second floor, that's currently not accessible. It's unfinished, but over time, we have plans to finish as some sort of a business welcome type of center, general meeting space. So being able to use the block grant for this purpose, we'll do this now, and then over time, finish the rest of it incrementally, both with outside services and in-house effort.
I would note that in my time on council, if memory serves me, several of these organizations that are regular recipients, the amount has stayed the same. And in the past, inflation has not been significant, but we're hearing that word a lot more. I would hope perhaps next round, we could look at an adjustment relative to some of these that have been the same for a number of years, pending, of course, the CBDG grant adjust as well, I hope.
Sure. And we're limited in what we can give out for what we look at, the public service component of this, which is capped at 15% of the total.
Right.
So we meet that every year. So whether or not we give them more or less to any one organization, we're giving the maximum amount overall. As council is aware, our award is very, very small compared to other cities our size, frankly, every other city our size in Ohio and probably most of the rest of the United States. I think we've given some debate over recent years as to whether or not it's still in our best interest to continue to do this program and not just look at folding back in with the county's effort. But we'll keep looking at that. But for now, the money that we do get gets used pretty effectively within the community. We have the flexibility to use it, and while a small amount, it's generally, most of it goes into service organizations and home rehabilitation within our city.
Thank you. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-037 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-038.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to RMH Concrete and Foundations, Inc., for the sidewalk repair/pedestrian safety program Zone 2A and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Bids were opened on Friday, May 21 for the sidewalk repair pedestrian safety program Zone 2A improvements. Bids received for the project ranged from a low bid of $385,658.80 to a high bid of The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost is $388,478. The low bid was received from RMH Concrete and Foundations Incorporated of Collins, Ohio, which is in Huron County, just east of Norwalk. The bid was found to be in conformance with all contract requirements, is therefore recommended that this contract be awarded to RMH Concrete and Foundations Incorporated in the amount of $385,658.80. Anticipated that the work will begin by July, with project completion specified for September 30 of this year. Just for some perspective, last year's bid was approximately $7 per square foot. This year's bid is $7.25, which equates to about $181 per slab. And Zone 2A is bounded by Garfield Road, Little Mountain Road, Mentor Avenue, and I-90. Thank you.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-038 has been approved. Second reading, there are none. Third reading, there are none. Managers report. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President, council. Council, we have two open pavement cut requests tonight. The first is from Lake County Department of Utilities to repair a sanitary manhole lid that is under the pavement at 8157 Broadmoor. Ask for your approval.
How did it get under the pavement?
It's in the pavement.
Can you answer that, Matt?
It must be low. It must be low.
Any ideas, Mr. Swigger?
I know that it's in the pavement, and it needs repaired. Any history of it being under the pavement, I do not have.
So possibly an overlay, and it was overlooked by an overlay.
Probably.
But we do know where it's at?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Metal detector will help.
They found it. I believe it's above ground.
I know it's red dot.
See the red dot?
I can assure you, it's above ground now.
Move to approve.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Continue, Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, council. And then the second open cut request is from Aqua, Ohio, to repair a water main leak on a 16-inch line under the bike lane at 6066 Hopkins.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Continue, Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, council. And then the second open cut request is from Aqua, Ohio, to repair a water main leak on a 16-inch line under the bike lane at 6066 Hopkins.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
The minutes of the June 1, 2021 work session have been approved. Council, you have received the minutes of the June 1, 2021 regular meeting. The next event is July 26 with the band Revolution Pie. That's a very busy night for us. July 26 is also the, I'm sorry, June 26 is also the Wildwood Fine Arts and Wine Festival, which goes on from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Mentor Comedy Night at the amphitheater, which features Mary Santora and Friends. So we've got your whole Saturday mapped out for you, a couple of weeks here.
And then finally, council, we have a few new businesses to announce. Rock, Paper, Scissors Kids Hair Salon is now doing business at 7470 Center Street. Pet IQ at 9200 Mentor Avenue, which is inside the Meyer Store. Emerging Light Services at 7547 Mentor Avenue. MG Spices at 7628 Tyler Boulevard. The Everly at 8200 Norton Parkway. And Amazing Grace, which is a charcuterie grazing board boutique at 7541 Mentor Avenue. So at an interesting time when our economy is reopening, we're glad to see a lot of ongoing business interest in our city, and we thank them for their confidence. That's all.
Clerk's correspondence, Julie.
Council is in receipt of a liquor permit transfer from CEC Entertainment, Inc., DBA Chuck E. Cheese, to CEC Entertainment, LLC, DBA Chuck E. Cheese, both at 8,000 Plaza Boulevard. Council is also in receipt of a liquor permit transfer from West Core Wine Corp., Rocky River, to Nostalgia Lounge at 8484 Mentor Avenue. And additionally, council is in receipt of Mentor Municipal Court, May 2021, month-end report. That is all.
Commission committee reports. Meeting minutes. Board of zoning, Board of building and zoning appeals, May 11, 2021. Tree commission, May 12, 2021, meeting. Old business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
Ken, kudos to our people on the Springbrook Gardens tree farm that just popped up recently. And there's a lot of trees back there, and I'm just excited to see that. It really speaks to the history of that park. And also, it's another example of how we're saving money by putting in these little saplings and developing them, and then moving them out to tree lawns throughout the city. And I know some of the trees will go into the park. And it made me think about the fact that we're going to do our own pavement markings. And I'm just excited to see what the next great idea coming forward will be to save money in this city, because those are two fantastic examples. So I'm glad to see that tree farm up and running. That's exciting. We can all watch them grow from passing by on Heasley.
If I could, just for a second, I was driving by with my daughter a couple days after they were planted, and just on her own, she looked over, and she said, "Oh, my, look at all those cute trees over there." Well, thank you.
They're cute now, but they'll get bigger.
Right around 250 to 300 trees. So we'll remove 50 to 60 a year, plant approximately one-year varieties, and five years later, harvest those. So as you said, it'll be a cost savings. And I think it's also a learning opportunity. I know that Mr. Kaminski's talked to the school district about maybe allowing them to utilize the tree farm for some sort of educational opportunities. And so I think it'll be nice.
So those trees will stand there for five years before moving out the tree lawns into other locations in the city?
Yes. Yeah. Well, each success of plantings will be there five years. So obviously, when we put the tree farm in, we had to go from, we had to plant trees from anywhere from one to five years of age, four years of age. But going forward, we'll have that rotating crop.
And just to say again, it's a wonderful aesthetic addition to drive down and see that happen. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President, if I could just make one mention, too. I didn't put this in my report, but I was thinking about it as we walked in the chamber here. We did, engineering did actually do a review, and there are a couple of piers that are showing some cracks on our boardwalk at Springbrook Park, which we're concerned about. And, Mr. Swigger, do you want to speak to that? A portion of that is closed right now, so obviously, go ahead.
Yeah. We had some work done last year, some punchless items under the structure. It was based on a final inspection that we were doing. So we observed a few cracked, they're called pier caps. They're precast concrete pucks, basically, that sit on top of the wood piles. So we have a couple that are cracked, a couple with some hairline cracks. So we were in contact with the design engineer out of Florida, our construction management team. So we were just, like I said, as the manager mentioned, we were re-inspecting and saw that one that was repaired last year had cracked again. It was poured in place. All the original items were precast. Anyway, so it was poured in place, cracked again. We did see another one that was also cracked. So we're currently investigating the cause and formulating a repair. Now, what we're doing right now, we did close a section of the south end of the boardwalk just to be safe as we're working our way through the.
It may be a design flaw, but up till now, has this cracked cap been under warranty?
They're currently under warranty, and they, once repaired, they would be under warranty again for a year. So we'll be talking about the warranty on the whole structure as we move forward, probably another year on the structure, so.
So we'll give you advice. I mean, the goal would be to obviously get that open as soon as possible and find out if it really is just a design flaw or maybe just some bad concrete or figure it out. But we'll keep, I just want to let you know, just in case you saw that it was closed down and you got some questions, a relatively recent event here, so.
Thank you. Continuing on old business, Mr. Donovan.
Speaking of parks, Mr. Philippiak, I've been getting calls on the Garfield pool, naturally. Me and you have talked about it. I drove by, and I noticed there's a hole in the roof. The pool's got some leaves in it. There's hoses laying around. Is there any way we can maybe keep that building up so it doesn't get dilapidated? You know, because in the future, there's going to be 280 more new residents in Ward 2, and I think that pool has a chance to recover. I know the numbers were down. They were down the year before, and then they were down during COVID. But I'm getting calls on it, and people are concerned that pool will not open again. So if we could keep it in condition to when these developments get done, I think that we're going to be able to fill that pool up back with people again. And then I would appreciate, there's a hole right in the roof in the front. If we could take a look at that.
Yeah, absolutely, council. I'm not aware of that, and I will tell you, the city actually completely renovated the inside of that structure.
Right.
The year before last, before it opened for the 2019 season. So we have continued to put money into it, and, you know.
I know we have new pumps, too, and things like that, and I hate to see them dry up and go bad, and it's expensive to.
Well, it's not our intention to close Garfield permanently. It's just that in this environment, not anticipating that there will be, you know, some reluctance for people to go back to the public swimming pools in general, you know, we were trying to take the prudent approach by not, and quite frankly, I'm not sure that we would be able to fill the lifeguard spots to keep three pools open. It is an ongoing difficulty right now to keep staff for the two pools that we have open. And so that's this year. I don't expect that that'll be a long-term problem, but as council is aware, every employer in town, ourselves included, are struggling to find qualified workers right now for a variety of reasons, and it's just, I think, some hesitancy to jump right back into the normal activities of daily life is certainly just one of those. But we'll have somebody on that tomorrow morning, I can assure you.
Just to keep it up to par. There's some of the soffits are actually rotting out the wood, and it's not that big of a deal. It's probably a $20 board. You could throw that up there, stain it, and just take a look at it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll have, I'll get on it right away.
Thank you so much.
Any other old business? Under new business, council, we have an appointment to make this evening for one elector of the city of Mentor to serve the remainder of a four-year term on the municipal planning commission ending 12/31/21. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
Mr. President, I would ask council to take into consideration the nomination of John Crocker to serve the remainder of the four-year term left in the retirement of our friend and colleague, Bill Snow. We know Bill will be missed by all of us, and we also know that Bill is probably sitting at home telling his wife something like, "The show must go on, dear, and we love you, Bill," and thank you, Mr. President.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Ms. Donovan, is that nomination then a motion to appoint?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Now, I will take a second.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
will be a long-term problem, but as council is aware, every employer in town, ourselves included, are struggling to find qualified workers right now for a variety of reasons. And it's just, I think, some hesitancy to jump right back into the normal activities of daily life is certainly just one of those. But we'll have somebody on that tomorrow morning. I can assure you.
Just to keep it up to par. Some of the sofas are actually rotting out the wood, and it's not that big of a deal. It's probably a $20 board. You could throw that up there, stain it, and just take a look at it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll have, I'll get on it right away.
Thank you so much.
Any other old business? Under new business, counsel, we have an appointment to make this evening for one elector of the City of Mentor to serve the remainder of a four-year term on the Municipal Planning Commission, ending 12/31/21. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
Mr. President, I would ask counsel to take into consideration the nomination of John Crocker to serve the remainder of the four-year term left in the retirement of our friend and colleague, Bill Snow. We know Bill will be missed by all of us. And we also know that Bill is probably sitting at home telling his wife something like, "The show must go on, dear." And we love you, Bill, and thank you, Mr. President.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Ms. Donovan, is that nomination then a motion to appoint?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Now I will take a second.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
John Crocker has been appointed to the Municipal Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2021. Persons before counsel.
Mr. President, I have a new business.
Oh, excuse me. It's Mr. Kirschner. Go ahead.
A couple of weekends ago, our girls, women's, or men or girls track team went down to Hilliard, Ohio, and just crushed everyone and won the state championship. And notable in that performance was probably one of the single most greatest performances by any athlete in the history of the school. Paige Floria, on Friday, she won the individual long jump championship. And she came back on Saturday, and she won the 100, 200, and 400-meter races. She won four individual state championships. Very hard to do. Some of those opponents are specialized in a single event. She had to run three of them in the same day. She got to put on a whole different hat each time you run. It's a whole different type of race, and she won all three of them. Also, on Friday, the girls 800-meter, or four-by-800-meter team won an individual state championship. On that team was Potter, Yocum, Burrow, and Dennison. Dennison might ring a bell. You remember Savannah was here a few years ago when she won a national cross-country championship before she was in high school. And we had her here before us to congratulate her. Also, Tori Lanis, on Saturday, won the girls' state championship in the high jump. So they had a number of state championships, just unprecedented in the job they did. And I look forward to following their careers as they proceed on to college. But just congratulations for an unbelievable performance.
Mr. President?
Mr. Filippiak.
If I could just follow up on that. At 6:45 this evening, right before the Mentor Rocks, we're going to be honoring the girls' track team here at the amphitheater and announcing, having them come up on stage and take a well-deserved bow.
Very timely. And it is exciting that things have gotten back to normal just in time, that this great girls' team could experience victory in person and competition. Is there any other new business?
Mr. President?
Mr. Monk.
Now we have an opening on BZA. So can you explain the process for that?
Well, whatever the term remaining, there would be an application process with a deadline, and then counsel, as always, reviews those applications, makes calls, interviews as necessary. And then at subsequent meeting, we would appoint a elector of the City of Mentor to fill the remaining vacancy for that term.
Thanks, sir.
Any other new business?
Do you like my motion, though?
No.
Okay. Give me the, give me a wink when you want it to.
Persons before counsel. Did we have any? There are none.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to revised Code Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes and for the reason that premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Here we go.
Here we go.